Good afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. We'll call the City Council Meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. At this time, item number one is our consent agenda. Councillors, what are your wishes?
I'll move. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number two are public hearings, and we have several. Item 2.1 is the 2023 MSAS Improvement Project Final Assessment Public Hearing. So at this time, we will open the public hearing. Mr. Stodheim.
Madam President, City Councillors, the first public hearing here is for the 2023 MSAS Improvement Project. And as a reminder, that project included the mill and overlay of North Highland Avenue from Oak Street out to Highway 14, and then also the full death reclamation of North Broadway from 20th North Street out to Cassat 13 or North Highland Avenue. To date, our office has not received any written objections to the assessments, and I do not believe finance has received any either. But it would be my recommendation that we open the public hearing and move forward with the hearing process.
Thank you so much. At this time, the public hearing is open. If there's anyone that does care to be heard, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
You want to list each one separate?
Sure. There are two projects. The first is North Highland Avenue from Oak Street to Highway 14. And the second is North Broadway from 20th North Street to Cassat 13.
Being I don't see anybody coming up, I'm going to offer the resolution, close the public hearing and adopting the final assessment roles for the 2023 MSAS Improvement Project payable over 10-year period, along with a 5% simple interest charge on the unpaid balance.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 2.2, regarding the 2023 Surface Reconstruction Project Final Assessment Public Hearing. Mr. Stodheim?
Madam President, City Councillors, this project consisted of six locations where we performed, where the Street Department performed surface reconstruction project on the roadway surface. As a disclaimer and full transparency, I am one of the benefiting property owners to this project as listed within the assessment roles. Again, it would be my recommendation that we go through the six project locations as part of the public hearing to see if there's any objections. Also, I have not received any written objections to date on this project.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the public hearing and go through each of the 2023 Surface Reconstruction Projects. Number one, German Street from 12th South Street to 16th South Street. Second project, State Street from 17th North Street to 19th North Street. Project three, 8th North Street from Broadway to Washington Street. Project number four, 17th North Street from Franklin Street to Jefferson Street. Project five, 6th South Street from Broadway to German Street. And the last project is First South Street from Valley Street to Front Street.
Hearing that nobody is raising their hand or getting up, I'll offer a resolution to close the public hearing and adopting the final assessment roles for the 2023 Surface Reconstruction Project payable over a 10-year period, along with a 5% simple interest charge on the unpaid balance.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Just to reiterate that there were no public comments or emails received. Correct. Thank you so much. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 2.3, 2023 Utility Street and Alley Improvements, Group One, Project Final Assessment.
Thank you, Madam President, City Councillors. Again, the 2023 USA Project consisted of seven unique project locations where we're proposing the assessments today. And also to date, no written objections have been submitted to the Engineering or Finance Office on this project as well.
Thank you, Mr. Stodheim. At this time, we will open the public hearing regarding the 2023 Street Utility and Alley Improvements. I'll read these four, let me see, projects. Oh, give me one moment. Lost my spot. Sorry. Okay, first is Washington Street from 7th South Street to 10th South Street. Minnesota Street from 7th North Street to 9th North Street. Oakwood Avenue from Betker Road to Milford Street. Alley Block 97, south of Center Street, along with the alley from 8th South Street to 9th South Street between Broadway and State Street. Alley Block 96, south of Center Street, along with the alley from 9th South Street to 10th South Street between Broadway and State Street. Alley Block 93, south of Center Street, along with the alley from 12th South Street to 13th South Street between Broadway and State Street. And the final project is miscellaneous storm sewer, concrete sidewalk, and ADA improvements.
Again, being nobody is jumping up to the microphone, I'm going to offer the resolution, closing the public hearing, adopting the final assessment roles for the 2023 Utility Street and Alley Improvements, Group One Project, payable over a 10-year period, along with a 5% simple interest charge on the unpaid balance.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Just again noting there were no comments or emails received.
That's correct.
Correct. Thank you. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 2.4, Public Hearing on Vacation of Street Right-of-Way.
Madam President, members of the City Council, the City Council received a vacation petition at its August 20th meeting. It was submitted by Jared R. Haynes, and it was for the vacation of the right-of-way that is located between South Valley Street and the Dakota-Minnesota Eastern Railroad right-of-way, and it is designated as 8th South Street. Mr. Haynes is the owner of the property on either side of the right-of-way that is proposed for vacation, and the city charter requires an abutting property on or to petition for the vacation, so he qualifies in that respect. This area that is being proposed for vacation consists of a variety of different types of industrial properties. Across the street are residential properties. 11th South Street in the same location has previously been vacated. The street right-of-way has never been improved. The land area proposed for vacation totals 5,600 square feet, and notice of the vacation request was provided to the two adjoining property owners, one being Mr. Haynes, the other being the Dakota-Minnesota Eastern Railroad. Staff would recommend approval of the vacation request for the following reasons. Number one, the vacation would improve the internal traffic circulation on this particular property. Two, city and public utilities commission departments, local communication companies, and abutting property owners had no objections filed with us. Three, this segment of right-of-way has not been improved and serves no constructive purpose as a street. And four, this is an area in which street segments have been vacated in the past with no adverse impacts. There's a couple of conditions. The first would be that Mr. Haynes would prepare a vacation plat and file the plat and authorizing resolution with the Brown County Recorder's Office. And two, that he would pay the vacation approval fee of $480. So that's a fee that's found in our fee schedule that we levy whenever we vacate property. This vacation is a little bit unique from the standpoint that the properties that Mr. Haynes owns on either side of it have different depths. One is, and I'm referring to the area from the street to the railroad, on one side it's 75 feet, and on the other side it's 65 feet. And so we're gonna, the plat that is prepared is going to have to reflect that difference. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Schneberg. At this time, we will open the public hearing regarding the vacation of the street right-of-way as described as 8th South Street between South Valley Street and the Dakota-Minnesota Eastern Railroad right-of-way.
Not hearing any interest from the audience. I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing and offer a resolution approving with conditions the vacation of the right-of-way described as 8th South Street located between South Valley and the Dakota-Minnesota Eastern Railroad right-of-way.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Did the railroad ever complain, Dave? Do they ever respond? Just curious.
No, they did not.
But have they ever, on any of these kind of things?
Not that I'm aware of. The city engineer, I don't know if you've...
I haven't received anything in comment from them.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item 3.1, raffles gambling permit for 3M Club of New Ulm Chapter of the United States.
Motion to approve the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for 3M Club New Ulm Chapter of the United States to conduct raffles gambling at the New Ulm Conference Center at the Best Western Plus, 2101 South Broadway, New Ulm, on Saturday, January 4th, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Item 3.2, Temporary On Sale 3.2 Malt Liquor License for Brown County Agricultural Society.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary on sale 3.2 malt liquor license to Brown County Ag Society to sell alcohol at Brown County Fairgrounds, 1201 North State Street for the annual Fall Demo Derby event on Saturday, October 5th, 2024, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry. Item number 4.1, Summary Business Conducted During Board and Commission Meetings. Les?
I can start. Two things to report on. I attended the daycare meeting the other day by Zoom, and we're almost coming up on a year, and we have had a little difficult time getting insurance for this unique property. It's a, you know, separate, independent owners inside that residence, inside that building. So we finally did get insurance, but now they've sent a letter saying they're not going to renew that light insurance. So now we're like gulp, here we go again. There was a, on our team, there's a county representative from the daycare folks, and she knows of somebody who was in daycare, and now she does license, insurance. So we're hoping that maybe we might get a connection there and get something going. But we have December, January, February to figure this out, but we're nervous. Without insurance, obviously, we can't stay open. So hopefully we'll get someone who can write that policy for us. We did have one, one of the owners did move out, new ones coming in in October, so we're still full out there, and everything seems to be going fine. EDA really wasn't a lot going on, except for the big talk about the potential sale of Garden Terrace. We did offer a motion at that meeting to set a public hearing to talk about that coming up in October. That's what I got.
Big news.
All right, Park and Rec. Park and Rec did meet. We will have two items further down the agenda. One's going to be looking at a sponsorship policy they want our approval on, and one will be grant acceptance for the new smoking signs in our city parks. Also, Heritage Preservation did meet. They approved signage for the K-Bar, which is part of the Kaiserhof, and there was a lot of discussion on that topic with the color and the issue, but they did promise that the original Kaiserhof sign will be getting moved back to the original Kaiserhof building. So that was approved. They did approve also a fence and a fire escape at 14th North, or 14th South, Minnesota Street. It's kind of unique. We've got a couple of them with fire escapes. It'll actually be on the front, side front of the building, and yet it was kind of the only way to get a fire escape out of it. They will be blocking it with a fence. And the last item that came in front of the HPC was the community photo shoot that was done by the Chamber a couple of months ago. I did get to see the picture. Some of you people are on there.
Uh-oh.
But they did approve it. The memorial, it's going to go on the thimble box, Center Street in Minnesota, and they do want to have it up and unveiling for Oktoberfest.
Was that the one you missed, that photo shoot? Did you miss that?
I am not on that photo.
Yeah.
Could we put them on there somehow?
I know, right?
But yeah, it was, I mean, very good. It really looks nice. It really looks great.
Good.
Very unique for a city.
Yes.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, councillor. Mayor?
I have several things to report on. Last Tuesday, I attended a CEO panel. It was hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, and the CEOs that presented that day were Toby Friar for the New Ulm Medical Center, Shannon Hilstein from Bank Midwest, Sean Coster from IDS 88, ISD 88, excuse me, Kyle Marty from Shell's Brewery, and Eric Warmka from Minnesota Funeral Homes. The subject of conversation was employees. How do you recruit them? How do you retain them? And what does the workplace look like? And/or are they at the workplace? So it was a very interesting conversation from three different areas of employment. At least I found it very interesting. I know there were several others that are here tonight that were at that event. Then the next day, I attended the New Ulm Partnership Meeting, which I sit on that commission or that partnership as part of an appointment or by their bylaws, and it's all about EDA. And so we had special guests there that day. First of all, we met the new executive director from New Brick, Steve Brown, and then also we had representatives there from Rebound Partners, and they talked about the projects that they have an interest in investing and developing in New Ulm. And then on Saturday, we had the celebration, the 110 birthday celebration of the popcorn wagon.
Hey.
And we celebrated that with a proclamation and also a ribbon cutting event, and they had an ongoing programming that entire day, including a presentation by Dr. Dan Grebner all about the popcorn wagon. And then last night, the Sisters Cities Commission hosted a reception for, a going away reception, I should say, for Annika Fisher, who has been the Hansios Exchange Person for the last three months. And she did a presentation for sharing what she saw and what she learned, and it actually was very tearful about having to leave New Ulm, and says she will return for sure. That concludes my program report.
Thank you. And yes, I had a chance to meet with Annika, and I couldn't attend yesterday. I mean, my only update is, it's not a commissioner board, but I did host Katerina Rice-Wish with us for five months, who was interning with the PUC, and we did have a little going-away party for her at my home at the end of the month, and now she is traveling west and will be heading to New York and heading back to Germany, but just had such a wonderful time here working at the PUC, getting to know people, getting to know New Ulm, really, really loves this community. I can't blame her for thinking that. But I don't have any other updates, but I wish her well, too. Moving on, item, section five, item number 5.1, regarding the airport crosswind, oh, I can't, crosswind runway, 927 recommendation. Mr. Stodheim?
Thank you, Madam President, City Councillors. At the September 10th Airport Commission meeting, the commission recommended that the City Council take all actions and give approvals as necessary for the city to acquire the interest in the real property needed for the Crosswind Runway 927 Improvement Project, as approved by the FAA and included in the city's airport layout plan and capital improvement plan. So just bringing that recommendation to you today for consideration. As a reminder, back in March, we received notice that the city is receiving funding from the federal government for this relocation project, and about $2.5 million. So this is just kind of the first step to begin that land acquisition process and negotiations, and then this will be brought back for future consideration once we have appraisals and whatnot, so.
Just one question for the city engineer. I'm assuming that the 18 acres, we're looking at all five property owners are aware that it's coming?
Yep. Yep, the property owners have been contacted. Environmental work's begun already with the past task orders that you've approved previously. So property owners are aware, yes. Yep.
With that, I'm going to authorize and direct the city engineer to coordinate with Meaden Hunt, the city attorney, and other consultants as necessary to commence negotiations and satisfy all applicable procedural requirements to develop purchase agreements for the city's purchase of the interest in real property needed for the Crosswind Runway Improvement Project, as approved by FFA and included in the city's airport layout plan.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Under Old Business, item 6.1, Second Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-090, Amending Chapter Four of the City Code.
I'll offer a motion to conduct the second consideration of adopt ordinance number 2024-090 for the city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, amending Chapter Four, Section 4.34, subdivision 11 of the city code, removing the administrative penalty for individuals selling tobacco to persons under the age of 21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item number 6.2 is a Herman Monument feasibility study update. Mr. Shugel?
Thank you, councillor. President Becker, City Council. At the October 17, 2023 City Council meeting, you authorized the city manager to enter into a professional service agreement with McDonald &amp; Mac for a feasibility study on Herman Monument. Since that time, that study has been completed and sent to the State Historic Preservation Office. In the packet, you would have noticed a letter of approval of that feasibility study and the process for next steps with Herman. One thing to point out in that letter, the State Historic Preservation Office indicated this would be the first time that they would be recommending a deconstruction process while the structure is still standing. So pretty significant there. Our next steps, then, would be with staff is working with McDonald &amp; Mac on a formal proposal for the next steps, which we hope to have by the end of the year to keep this process going. So, but good news so far that the first step of the approval process has been completed. And then our goal would be to come back to you with updates as we have them.
So what is the next step?
So the next step really is to get a proposal on deconstruction documents, engineering documents, on how to deconstruct the monument. And then there's, with the significance and large scale of this project, there are so many subcontractors, and getting really a price tag on what that's going to look like.
That's going to be...
Yeah, I mean, for the general public, this is not demo. It's deconstruction. We might use the cast iron pillars that are there, the existing railings, the...
Yeah, correct. Whatever we're...
Whatever we can save.
Right. We'll take Herman off the top, put him off to the side, fence him in, light it up, have some interpretive panels there, and then start it, hopefully start at the top and deconstruct. And as we go down, if we find usable items, keep those. If not, keep going down and find out and try to figure out where our water intrusion is coming from and mitigate that. That's our big, that's the biggest goal, so.
So will there be a plan?
So will there be a plan? You know, we took Herman down in 2004, if I remember correctly. Um, and he would just kind of put down alongside the statue as they fixed him up. But people still wanted to see Herman, people that come to our community and tourists.
Yep.
So are we, are we going to have a dedicated spot for Herman out there?
Have, have him somewhere so we can open it up. People come and take a look at it up close, take pictures and stuff.
Right. And it's kind of neat because it's a different angle for sure.
So that's, that's the goal. But, um, like Joey said, it's a long process to get to that. Once we get the documents, then it's going to be a matter of going out for, for bids to see what, who's interested in doing the deconstruction. And as we do that, having the architect alongside and drawing up documents for the reconstruction.
Is there any concern that we're not going to find folks to do this work? It's not every day people are tearing down statues.
It's going to be a specialty, specialty group coming in, but, um, I think it's a high profile project.
That's true.
There's going to be some interest in it.
I'm going to say specialty and spendy.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, yes.
I mean, if they can, I mean, if they can build all kinds of different things, I think they can figure that out. It's just not something that I'd have any expertise in. But, um, yeah, there's, there's some great engineers out there and hopefully we get a lot of options, right?
Yeah.
Be the best.
And guesstimate on start and end dates? We're going to want to know.
As soon as we have all the money left, that's when they're going to finish.
The architect said he'd have the, um, hopefully have a fairly firm price on the construction or the deconstruction documents and have that prepared by the end of the year.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So we're looking at using the balance that, um, city council's been putting away for us for Herman to be able to jumpstart this instead of waiting for a code cycle. So if we did that, we wouldn't be able to. If we hit the code cycle in '25 and actually got it, we wouldn't be able to start till '26.
Realistically, three to six years.
Ooh, I was thinking longer than that, but.
Depends on if there's money.
Yeah, I know, I know. If, uh, never mind. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. I'll motion to receive and order file the Herman Monument feasibility study prepared by McDonald and Mac Architects and the next steps related to Herman Monument reconstruction.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.1, City of New Ulm Parks Trails and Recreation Facilities Program Sponsorship Policy.
Yes. Council President Betker, City Council, the, before you is a draft policy that has been reviewed by the city attorney's office, uh, for a sponsorship kind of guide policy on a framework of how to man, manage our different sponsorship opportunities that come through. Um, sponsorship opportunities often are not the same coming through and, and it's not necessarily a one size fit all for all the different opportunities, especially in our parks and recreation system. Um, this policy is, is, uh, goal is to guide staff throughout the process, but also have a guide for the Park and Rec Commission and the city council as some of these, uh, opportunities present themselves. And, uh, additionally, this is an opportunity to generate additional revenue, um, within the Park and Recreation Department for some of the awesome amenities that we have. Um, I'd be, this was unanimously approved at the Park and Rec Commission meeting in, in September, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And one of the comments, the Park and Rec Director, I mean, it does give him a little leeway. It's not concrete in stone. You, it's not boilerplate, so it does give him a little leeway on how to do this. And I think it's a great program. And again, 100% Park and Rec backed.
And we do get a lot of donations and stuff. I mean, we all know that. Every month we're approving something, it seems like. So I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion to approve the proposed City of New Ulm Park, City of New Ulm Parks Trails and Recreation Facility Program Sponsorship Policy.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That does carry. Item number 7.2, um, ship acceptance, ship grant acceptance.
Council President Betker, City Council, at the August 20th City Council meeting, you authorized staff to apply for the statewide health and partnership improvement grant for smoke-free signage in parks and recreational facilities. This now is, uh, we were successful in that application. So this would be accepting $3,000 to be able to fund that new signage throughout our Park and Rec system.
And again, the Park and Rec meeting, 100% unanimous recommended acceptance. I'll offer the resolution to accept the statewide health improvement partnership grant for smoke-free signage in parks and rec, Park and Recreation Facilities in the amount of $3,000.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Shugel. Item 7.3, preliminaries to the New Ulm budget.
Hey, councillors, Danielle's going to bring the slides up for me, but, um.
Thank you.
As you know, I don't like to talk a real long time, so we'll go through this fairly quickly. And then we can discuss, um, what you guys have noticed and, and what changes you might want to see in the budget before we get to that final in December. So, we're ready. Um, there, as far as revenue goes, um, last year for the LGA, the local government aid, we received a huge increase. It was a half a million dollars. Didn't happen this year. Only went up $7,200, so basically stayed flat. And I would imagine that will be a more modest and, um, regular interval for increases as we move forward through the next few years. I was able to decrease the debt levy quite a bit. Over the years, we have paid down quite a bit of debt. Um, since 2015, the debt levy has decreased by like half a million dollars. So, um, our strategy with the debt has worked out very well. I will warn you that this is the last year it will go down. We have some large projects coming up over the next few years. And some of the work we've done with our bond advisors, um, is really indicating that we're going to see some increases in that levy, as we start to bond for some larger projects going forward. We do have some fund balance budgeted within this budget that I'm presenting. Um, I have, I am proposing using 100,000 of the general fund balance. And as of right now, using $305,000, $305,000 out of the Park and Rec fund balance as well to cover some of their projects. There is a wage and benefits increase. The health insurance went up 15%. Um, we originally expected 30, so great news. Our, our broker has done a great job for us on that. Um, wages will go up. We do have union negotiations coming up this year yet, so that is a little bit in the gray area yet. We're not entirely sure what that increase might be in the end. So we've left some room in the budget to, uh, to accommodate what may or may not happen there. So with this budget that I'm presenting, we are looking at a levy increase of, a preliminary levy increase of 7.68%. So we'll talk about that some more as we go through. And then as far as terms of how that affects the tax rate, which we brought down significantly last year, um, the tax capacity actually decreased like $11,000, so basically stayed flat for the year. Um, didn't surprise me. We had some very large increases over the last couple of years. So I think we're back maybe on a more, um, even keel as we move forward. I would, I would have expected to see at least a 2%, but maybe with those larger increases over the last couple of years, we wouldn't see that. And maybe going forward, that would be what we should expect. So time will tell there. This is a slide I generally throw in here every year. It just kind of gives you an idea of where the levy has been over the last several years. Um, you can see the levy has gone up quite a bit, um, since 2013. But if you look at the tax rate, even though there was years where it was quite high, we have actually achieved a flat, really a flat increase in that tax rate based on, on, um, where our levy has been. So what that tells us is that over the last 11 years, 12 years, um, the tax capacity has kept up with what we need in total for those funds, even though there was years where it maybe was a little off kilter. Yeah, I think that's all on that slide. So then we get into what is in the budget. So looking at what we've come down to, I mean, the departments have done a good job. They're very responsible with their budget. They didn't throw a lot of huge projects. There's not a lot of capital items in this budget. So looking at this list, and then I have a couple of other things too, that I can explain why I didn't list them. But, um, it's just some of the things that stood up, but really I, I don't know that they're big ticket items that, that we have a lot of power over. Christmas decorations, we had $10,000 in there. I reduced that to $8,000 the other day to offset something else that we had to change. We really haven't used the full $10,000 for, for the last couple of years. City Hall landscaping, we thought maybe we could make some changes out front, um, with that street view of, of City Hall. We have $10,000 in there for that. We don't have any estimates. We don't have any quotes. We don't have a plan. Um, so that was just a number to put out there. There is $40,000 in the street budget to repaint the Public Works Building. Um, that, that is something that's needed. I'll skip over the building for now. Um, the engineering department has some new GPS equipment that's needed or to update what they have, um, currently. That's about $20,000. Um, the library is adding some new shelving to the children's room. That's about $25,000. Um, over the last few years, the library has done a lot of updates and they've been using fund balance for quite a few of those over the years. They don't have any planned use of their fund balance this year. So that would be in the levy. Um, and then going back to that street department storage building, um, they are in need of extra storage for the equipment that they do have. They are proposing, or they originally had $225,000 in the budget for 20, for 2025. I talked to Jeff. I asked if it was okay to kind of split that up over the next couple of years. So we have $100,000 in the 2025 budget right now, and the other 125 would be in the 2026 budget.
So I don't forget, Nicole, uh, I got a quick question on it. And we have our maintenance fund, right? Is it the 290?
The 601.
601. That is in really great financial shape?
It is, it keeps up with the equipment that needs to be replaced, um, all the.
I mean, the building, our building maintenance fund.
Oh, yeah. Oh, the 290.
290.
Yes, that is in good shape as well.
Really good shape.
But that is for maintaining existing buildings.
I get it. But are we allowed to use that on a one-time deal?
For what?
For this building. I'm looking at, oh, construction is escalating another year out. I don't believe 225 will be enough. It's 1% levy impact. Just something to think about. I wanted to ask that upfront.
I would caution you there just because, um, with, um, some of the Park and Rec buildings, that original sales tax fund is basically gone at this point.
The first one.
So when the Civic Center needs a new roof and the Community Center needs a new roof, we're going to start seeing some bigger projects coming out of those 290s.
We're going to cover them with poly.
So.
All right. I just wanted to ask.
Um, once.
As long as we're on that page, can I ask another question? Um, Christmas decorations. I know we've been adding quite a bit in the last couple of years. Do we? And if we're not spending all the money, what, what's left to do for Christmas? Is there another plan?
Every year we paying for the reeds, uh, and then looking at new tree, um, there's a couple of trees I want to add that weren't lit up, that should be lit up, um, as well. So again, nothing major, major, but it's just every year paying for the reeds.
Maintaining the decorations that we do have.
Just wanted to double check on that. Thank you.
All right.
Um, and then with that street department building, um, once that is constructed, then it will be in the 601 fund.
It'll come in the 601.
Each department will pay in to help fund the maintenance and the future.
All right. Thank you.
The replacement of that building. Oh, going back to that last slide, I was just going to add, there's a few things I didn't list just because they've already been discussed or, um, really are things that need to be done that I didn't know if you would want to make decisions on. So one would be the contributions that we've made to all, that we've decided to make to all of the other, uh, community organizations. That was $151,000. So that was a percent and a half in here. Um, a little bit more than last year, but not, not a significant increase. And then Park and Rec has some parking lots in there as well that need some maintenance done. Um, that amounts to about $34,000. So that is currently in the levy.
It is?
Yes.
All right.
Um, and then looking at 290, so this is planning for our future, uh, making sure we have the money we need to buy new equipment as it needs to be replaced, maintain our facilities, um, manage our bonding costs and issues and, and some other, um, funds, just making sure we have what we need as we move forward through the next few years. So the fire tech equipment replacement, um, that I have budgeted at $200,000. That's been at 300,000 the last couple of years. I looked at it again. I looked at the schedule. I looked at the replacement. I looked at, you know, the values we're using to determine future purchases. And I feel like we can take the reduction in this account and still be healthy enough to maintain that account, even all the way through the year 2045, I think I've been out to. So I think we're good. Um, same with the city facility fund. I only put 250 in there this year. Um, in the past, we've done 350. Again, I'm comfortable with it. We've been doing some looking and some evaluating. And those schedules will be in the, in the budget book. Once it's compiled and we've made all those decisions. So you'll be able to see what's going on in those 290 funds and, and where that future is. Otherwise, I can tell you at any point in time too. Um, and then the capital improvement fund, we've been putting 200,000 in. This is a fund that we use to manage, um, the bond issues when needed. Um, if there's a year where we don't have enough assessments to cover, to make, to meet those, we'll pull money from here to help keep that bonded amount down. Um, the next planned use for that is in 2028. Um, we plan to use a few hundred thousand dollars out of there, um, just to manage that bond issue that year. But there is, it, it's healthy enough to maintain that and, and plan for, for 2028. The ultimate goal would be to use it, build it up to a point where we don't have to issue bonds anymore and we can pay, you know, upfront as we go, but, um, it would take quite a few years. It'll take a few years to get there, so. Um, and then the battery building has been in there last several years. Of course, that's done. They're constructing that this year. So there's no more, um, contributions for that. The Herman, the German, um, we're only putting 100,000 in. That's what we've been putting in for the last few years. I know it's a drop in the bucket of what that project's going to cost. But it, it gives us something to build on. And when we're applying for grants and everything, we can say, well, we're trying. We're, we're coming up with some funds on our own. This is our plan there.
Do we have 400 in that account now?
By the end of '24, we'll have 400 in there.
Thank you.
And I would note, you know, the, the good thing with having that money in there is, is, um, I would have alluded to, we can use that money for the documents that we need. So really not relying on the grant cycle to get that and be out years. And then, um, the sooner we get those documents, the sooner we can start going to the legislature to look at bonding, getting the bonding cycle and bonding bill and things like that, so.
Um, and then the police equipment is one we added a few years ago that is to help replace tasers, firearms, radios, things, some of the smaller purchases, not their vehicles, because we just budget for those every year anyway. But just as fun for that. And they are using that fund as well to repay the fire department for the last radio purchase as well. Um, at the Park and Rec equipment, that is for the rec center, basically for the fitness equipment. Uh, you know, we figured out when we built that, that new center, that at some point we're going to have to replace all that equipment. And a lot of it's going to come due about the same time. Um, so we've been planning for that and, and we set this fund up to help with that. Blight is the same. We know we've had more and more issues with different properties. This gives us a small fund to at least draw from, um, to manage those properties as needed, uh, right away before we can assess anything or if something can't be assessed or, or to cover those issues. And then going back to the playground equipment fund, that is a new one that we are proposing to set up. Um, to set it up in 2024, we plan to use, um, there was $140,000 budgeted, 170, budgeted to, to replace some equipment at a park. It was determined that that equipment does not need to be replaced at this time. It has quite a few years on it. And there are some bigger parks with bigger equipment that will need some maintenance and replacement over the next couple of years. Um, so we're using that money in 2024 to establish this fund and then proposing to put $150,000 in there in 2025. So my thought at this point, and right now that $150,000 is in the levy. But my proposal would be, or possibility would be to use Park and Rec fund balance to help to build that account at least for 2025 and then see what we, where we're going for 2026 and everything. So that would take another 150,000 out of the levy if that's something that you would be interested in doing. So that covers what we're planning for, for the future and what's in the, in the levy for that. And then these are the things that we're planning to use fund balance for this year, Emerald Ash Bar. We plan to put $100,000 in there to help establish a program for replacement or to help citizens with replacement and removal of those trees. Um, and then within the Park and Rec fund right now, that $305,000 we plan to use for their master plan, some tree replacements, dugout roofs at North Park, a resurfacing the tennis court or pickleball court at Washington Park. And then another payment into the amphitheater fund, that is short. And then just looking around, I, I know we're always curious what's going on around us. And I've been watching the headlines and then talked to some of the other city, uh, finance directors. This, um, gives, or this actually, this, these numbers came from the state revenue website. Just giving us an idea of what's happened over the last five years, you know, because we've all seen these big swings and inflation and wage changes. So this gives us an idea of what's really happened with our tax levy and rate over the last five years. So like, if you look at New Ulm, over the last five years, we've brought our tax rate down 10.28%. So that's the lowest it's been probably since 2011. And then the levy has actually increased 26%. But when you start to compare that to some of the other communities that have seen larger increases in their levies or lower, uh, decreases in their rates, um, it just kind of gives you an idea of where we're sitting. And then this is what's going on with the levies this year. Um, so you can see New Ulm's kind of falling in that bottom middle, uh, portion right now. Um, and of course, all these are preliminary levies. I'm not sure what these cities plan to do for their finals. But, um, just seeing some big jumps because of inflation and wages mostly is, is what I'm hearing. Um, so you can see that New Ulm right now is at that 7.68, variable's at 19.7, where you go all the way back to Mankato, which is at 4%. So there's a range all over the state, but generally they're pretty. So there's a range all over the state, but generally, they're pretty high this year. And then this just gives you an idea of how that 7.68% levy change might affect a taxpayer with a middle-income home in the community. So at this point, they would see, based on that tax capacity staying flat, about $107 increase for the year. And I believe that's it.
All right. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Danielle.
To the Park and Rec Fund, can we talk a little bit more about how much money is in that account?
Yep.
And what the plans are for that balance? You talked a little bit about that already, but I want to make sure.
So currently, or as of the end of '23, so the audited number at the end of '23, their fund balance available for spending, so removing out those parkland dedication fees, is 1.7 million. So to plan to use that 305,000, at this point, that would bring them down based on.
1.4, 1.4 then?
Yep, bring it down to 1.4, which is about 36, 37% by the end, if everything falls in the estimates by the end of '25. They would be at about 36, 37%.
And that account was developed quite a few years ago, correct, or started?
Before my time.
I mean, the history of it was, I do remember that it was supposed to go about 10 years. I mean, I love the park program. I'm not against anything with park. Again, in terminology, that is city fund balance. I mean, it's not the Park and Rec Fund Balance. I'm.
Right, we basically set it up like a reserved account.
A reserve account.
Like this is a designated account. This is what these funds are used for is Park and Rec.
But you also said, Nicole, that there's some repairs coming to those buildings, a new roof, new other things that are coming up there are going to be crazy expensive, but probably not to that degree.
Yeah.
Yes?
The roof, compressors, that stuff.
So we couldn't slice off 100,000 out of there and help reduce our levy a little more?
I might be comfortable with that. I understand what she's saying about the cost of some of these buildings.
Yeah.
That would wreak havoc on our 290. All right.
I just was curious about like the playground equipment and some of those other things. Like those are their own separate funds, not in that fund balance then, right?
Right, they would be set aside specifically for you.
So these are all going to be continuing to set aside. So adding that then into the total Park and Rec budget, if we kind of look at that holistically, the Park and Rec budget's going to go up essentially another what? Well, if you count Herman Monument and some of these other things, I mean, you're talking a very significant amount of money. And I've said, and I will say it again, I am so proud of our Park and Rec system, but it really is the highest per capita in the state, and that's why I was very glad to see some of this information coming forward tonight about potential sponsorship opportunities and support for the Park and Rec system, because we do need to look at, this is unsustainable. I'm active and I love it, but I don't know. So if there is anything that we can do to, oh, streamline that a little bit, I think we should, I think we should look at doing that. I know stuff is very expensive, and we need to take care of it and support it, but it's like breaking all this stuff out and then adding this and adding this and adding this, like we just, we can't keep doing that.
No, but I think, I mean, I think really, without increasing fees.
Right. That needs to be looked at as well.
If you want to maintain the system we have, it's not really a question of the size of the budget, because their budget is modest, and they don't overspend to maintain those things.
Right.
It's the size of the park system.
Right.
How big do you want that system to be?
And that isn't.
If that's the draw to the community.
And it's nothing on anyone here that's, you know, putting this information together.
And also, one other thing as far as comparisons go, when you're saying it's the largest per capita, maybe it is. Maybe it's the largest park system. I'm not sure, but it is, it is very, very, very difficult for me to compare to other cities and see how it's budgeted, because not all of them have it in their city budget. Some have it in their school budget. Some have it outside of their city budget. I don't, I don't know how it's all funded or what's hidden in their general fund. It's really hard to see apples to apples what one park system costs compared to another.
Right. No, I agree.
And I bring this up every year, Nicole, about, I realize it's state legislator, our LGA expendable, so that much has to, our LGA has to go into the park system.
Well, what we do is we, and this is how we allocate it right now, and not to say that's the right answer. So right now, I use a calculation. I plug in all the revenues. I plug in all their expenses. You know, it spits out what is their bottom line, and then allocates the LGA, the INLU, and the property taxes based on that.
Right.
So it's all split out that way. So if there becomes another funding mechanism or another calculation that we can come up with that pulls that out of that, so they don't necessarily have to get LGA or have to get INLU, but they're going to have to be funded somehow.
Right.
So it's, you know, what do you want that mechanic, the mechanics of it to be?
And the fee schedule was approved by the Park Board. That'll be coming sometime later. Mrs. Shugel has it, you know, 3% to 4%. It's actually modest. I mean, it is. The cost of facilities and whatnot. Again, though, I'm going to back President Becker on that sustainability. When you start looking at the percentage of our total budget, I get it, the taxpayer want nice parks and whatnot, and yet they don't want their taxes raised. They don't want to pay for it.
They don't want to pay more when they go to the gym.
Right.
Yes. And so it's, you have a hard job, Nicole, and you've done excellent with it, and you present the information very clearly, and I thank you, and, you know, I am so thankful for what you do, and yeah, you make it easy for us, but, I mean, this information's in front of us, and I think, yeah. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Well, my comment is that sustainability for the future of our, what I also am very proud of, our Park and Rec system. But going forward, looking at sustainability is our responsibility, and if it's looking at some of our parks that are undeveloped and looking at whether or not we really have to and should be developing them is realistic for us. So I'm seeing that Park and Rec is doing some strategic planning, and I can only assume that sustainability will be a part of that, as well as the city looking at sustainability and what our residents want. But I do concur that, again, it behooves us at least to look at it, and then you can say, yes, let's continue on this path of funding it as we are, or we say, no, we are going to change that. But you have to look at things and extrapolate all the pieces of that puzzle, and so going forward, I'm sure it'll be on our agenda.
And the comprehensive plan, I think, helped give us some direction on that as well, so I think that can help back some of the decisions a future council will make on in this area. I still really would like to pull 100 off that Park and Rec Fund. That'll drop us to, what, 6?
It would take 1% off, so we'd be at 6.68, at least for the preliminary.
I'll be open. I'm really for that.
Yeah, I am too.
I mean, I understand all of our planning. We do great. It's like, kind of like councils years past. They used to call them sinking funds. They kind of abolished those. One pot of money. The 290 fund is for roofs, maintenance, tuck boarding, and yet we got our own little pot that we just said we're going to use. Then why isn't it in the 290 fund? You want to use it for that? Why isn't it in there? I mean, later date for that discussion, but I am, we're going to go along with Counselor Schultz. I am with those numbers for lowering another percent on the levy. I am.
Yep, and I, just in regards to the levy, I just want to say, because of those union negotiations and a couple of other things that are in question, I know 6.68 doesn't sound great, but it's preliminary, and there's room to wiggle it, and from what I've looked at, and if we do use another part of the fund balance, I think.
We don't have to tonight. I understand. I'm going to put it on the radar with other councilors.
Based on, you know, numbers I've estimated and things I've considered possible, depending on union negotiations and a couple of other issues, at the most at this point, I think I can get us to about 4.9, 4.8. So again, this is preliminary. We have to set this by the end of September.
Right.
And then we'll have the meeting in December to set that final amount.
Yeah, we are missing two councilors tonight, and I think they should have, should be able to weigh in on this decision as well.
It's not the final, unless you're going to have to offer, because I can't get it to pull up.
Yeah, I can do that.
Do you want the numbers?
He's got, always has computer problems over here.
Do you want the numbers for the resolution, if you're keeping this and using 100,000 more?
Do you want to do that tonight, Les, or not?
Well, do we want to do that tonight?
Well, this is preliminary.
Yeah, it's preliminary.
Leave it at the 7.68?
I was thinking about leaving it the same with the understanding that.
Understanding, so it's out there, but yeah, I'm all right with that.
So that levy amount in the resolution should be.
Is correct, the one that's.
Should be 10.711, 637, because I did find a few hundred dollars the other day.
Oh, that's, so that'd be the current one?
So 10.711, 637.
All right, knowing that we are setting the maximum, that we can't go any higher than this, but we can go lower, and that.
Which we will.
And the attention is that we will take a serious look at the next meeting, or the last, one of our upcoming meetings, on reducing that by another 100,000. So I'll offer a resolution accepting the preliminary 2025 budget for the city of New Ulm with a total appropriations of $28,239,574, a maximum property tax levy of $10,611,600.
711,000. $10,711, 637.
You have 611 here.
That's because I took the 100,000 out, but if you're going to wait to do that.
$10,711,905, and setting the public hearing date, dates for December 3, 2024 at 6:00 PM, and the continuation public hearing for December 10, 2024 at 6:00 PM, if needed, to consider the 2025 budget.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second additional discussion. Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries.
Can you get it opened?
Item 7.4 tonight is a Minnesota DNR volunteer fire assistance grant. Chief?
President Becker and councilors, we received a notification that our grant application was accepted for a 50-50 matching grant with the DNR for a fire rescue skid from the back of the Ranger that was so generously donated to the fire department. So we, we haven't received the contract yet, but we'd like to make sure that the approval is done, so when we get the contract, we can sign it and get things ordered.
Anything else? I'll offer the resolution to accept a grant in the amount of $3,445 from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources volunteer fire assistance grant to be used towards the purchase of a QTAC 85 EMS dash C fire rescue skid for the Polaris Ranger.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item 7.5, annexation petition for property generally located at 2312 North Highland Avenue.
Madam President, members of the city council, we received a annexation petition from the owners of the property, Adam Wells and Shayna Wells. Property totals 5.46 acres and is located in Milford Township. There is a single-family residence on the property. The property abuts the city limits on three sides and is within the area subject to the orderly annexation agreement between the city and Milford Township. I would note that the 87% of the boundaries of this particular property do abut the city, so it's a substantial amount. The, there is residential development currently to the southwest and east of the property, and in our comprehensive plan, we propose to have residential development to the north as well. The portion of the staff report regarding the zoning of the property upon annexation is in error. The property, when approved for annexation, would be zoned agriculture, open space, and that's as stipulated in our zoning ordinance. A plat for the property has been submitted, and we are in the process of going through the approval for that. The plat would divide the property into five lots, and four of those lots would be suitable for single-family residences, and then the final lot would be for a variety of different types of residential uses could be located there. In consideration of this matter, staff would note that the property abuts the city limits and can be served with municipal utilities, that the property is within the boundaries of the orderly annexation agreement with Milford Township, and that the property should be annexed into the city in order to facilitate its development. That would conclude the staff report on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
I'll go ahead and offer a resolution approving the annexation of the property legally described as Exhibit A and generally located at 2312 North Highland Avenue.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. With no additional business, the meeting this evening is adjourned. We will move.